We'll move on to the consent calendar. I would love to see a motion for approval of the April minutes.
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Excellent. Gio, can you call the roll?
Vice Chair Witcher?
Hi.
Commissioner Trap?
Hi.
Commissioner Kiyaki?
Hi.
Chairfield?
Hi.
Your motion is passed.
Excellent. Now we are on public comment. Apologies, someday I'll get this in perfect order. It'll probably be right around the time I'm done being chair. Do we have any non-agendized public comment in person or on Zoom? We welcome speakers providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic. If speaking to a particular agenda item, if speaking during general public comment where we are right now, they must address general matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, and I would say also of the Park and Rec Commission. If speakers fail to do, fail to follow these rules, they will be warned, and if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Thank you for that reminder. That being said, anyone in this room have non-agendized public comment they would like to offer? I recommend.
Yep.
Chairfield, we do have one speaker in person, and at this time, we do not have any hands raised virtually.
Excellent. Is the person in here, the woman here standing up? Excellent, let's hear it.
Alright, since I'm here anyway, I thought I should just say it's May 1st, which is the first day of Bike Month. So please, please, please get out on your bike. If you want to participate in the regional Bike to Work, Bike to Work Everydays, check out BayAreaBikeToWork.com. You can pledge to ride anytime in May, anywhere, any length of ride with anyone, and it counts. And then this year is our 30th year of Bike to Work Day. So we're celebrating with a 30,000 mile challenge. So you can also log your rides on Ride with GPS. Go to that website, it'll tell you all the information and help us get to 30,000 miles of bike riding in May. That's it, thank you.
Is there a place one might go for more information about this Bike Month? That's BayAreaBikeToWork.com?
Yes.
All spelled out?
All spelled out.
Excellent.
You can also just Google Bike to Work Everydays and it will pop up. Hopefully number one, if you said everything properly. But thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any other public comments?
Do you want to have any names?
Excellent, then I will close the public comment period for this time, and we can move on to item number three, capital improvement projects update. This is an informational item, and I will call for a staff presentation.
Right, good evening. Marie Silva, Deputy Director of Parks and Rec. And joining me is Steve Boo, Project Manager. Lead Guru on all capital improvement projects for Public Works. So we'll go ahead and get started. So capital improvement projects come to us various ways, whether it's a maintenance project. Public has brought some items to our attention so that we can address them. The majority of the work is managed by Public Works, and then there's a section that's managed specifically by Parks and Rec. Like we talked about Central Park, Fallen Heroes, that we're managing with King Leon as our project manager. But the majority of the projects that we're going to talk about today are directly overseen by Steve Book.
Bearsford ADA.
The Bearsford ADA entry project is, the scope pertains to the exterior entry of the recreation center from the parking lot to the front door. This is a voluntary ADA improvement. However, the existing conditions, as you can see in some of these pictures, that are in actually poor condition. So the scope of work involves majority of regrading, a little bit of landscaping, and reconfiguration of the existing accessible parking stalls that are just north of where these pictures are in the parking lot. Park Restroom Phase Four involves three separate locations. The park restrooms at Indian Springs Park, Casanova Park, and Fiesta Meadows Park. The picture you see here is currently ongoing in construction at Casanova Park. Currently, we are probably about 50% complete. We are expecting the project to be complete at the end of June. It basically involves an interior renovation of two separate restrooms and water fountain. A lot of the scope really involves accessible improvements. And in this case, it doesn't lead out to a parking stall of any sort, but in other locations, it will. Oh, sorry, sorry. It looked the same to me. Park Restroom Phase Five. We have a lot of park restrooms and a lot of faces. Sorry. So Lake Shore and Shoreview for Park Restroom Phase Five, there are only two locations here. We, the picture on the left is the Shoreview location, also involves two separate restrooms. This one is about 40% complete. And it is also currently under construction. What you see there is kind of the exterior of, I guess there's actually two doors there, two single-use restrooms there. Almost the same type of scope where, but except this location involves accessible improvements to the parking stalls as well. As of today, the parking stalls have been completed. The restrooms are next. So in the next couple of weeks, you will, if you're out there, you'll see demolition and reconstruction of the interior spaces. The picture on the right is the Lake Shore location. That is actually a restroom slash storage slash convenience. What do you call this?
Snack Shack.
Snack Shack for the baseball events there and park events as well. And so we will also be regrading a lot of what you see on the exterior concrete areas there. So it's a little bit more than just a restroom renovation. It's actually a lot of regrading on the outside to make sure if it meets ADA slopes. Okay.
Are you going to explain it? Yeah.
Okay. So Lake Shore Recreation Center ADA entry is similar to the location at Bearsford, where the existing entryway is out of compliance. The project scope involves regrading and reconstruction of the entry area that leads all the way out to the parking stalls. What you see in the picture here is actually a temporary ramp that was replaced, that basically replaced the existing collapsed ramp from about a year ago, maybe two years ago now. Currently, the project's on hold. We are expecting to make it part of a larger project that basically renovates most of the recreation center itself.
Let's expand things. Let's expand.
So King Center rehabilitation project is currently, we are going through assessment phase to figure out what our scope is. Currently, we are in a programming phase where I guess the city is evaluating what they really want out of this facility. The facility is, I believe, over 50 years old, and it's heavily used. And yeah, we basically need to figure out how to improve, make improvements throughout the center to bring it up to compliance and modern use. King and Joinville Pool Assessments, improvements. So at both locations, the pools are current, currently in need of improvement. Both pools are leaking to some degree. A lot of the pumps, a lot of the accessibility's features are out of compliance. And so we are also doing assessments at both locations to figure out the scope, figure out what is needed and what, what we can afford. The fire alarm system at the King Center, there actually isn't one as we speak. And so in order to meet, to comply with current requirements, we are currently in the process of installing one. Construction actually begins this Saturday and should be completed at the end of May. So again, at the King Center, we have two kitchens at the center. One of them, we call it the small kitchen because it's technically a smaller kitchen, used by many clubs that rent out the recreation center. This project is actually complete as of two weeks ago. See the before and after pictures. Washington, Washington Park Basketball Court. This is a, what started as a resurfacing project, currently is nearing completion. Currently, it should be complete by next week. We were actually hoping to finish this before the rains started. And due to the, to the weather and the wet soil, this project was delayed a few months. What you see there is probably 90% complete. I think these pictures are taken about this time last week. The resurfacing project not only centered around the court itself, but also the entry area, which you see there, the concrete you see there is actually brand new. We had to do a lot of regrading and re-sloping, install the, a new accessible gate to the fence as well. And there's also a new water fountain feature there. The Laurelwood Park retaining wall project hasn't quite started yet, but there is evidence of damage to the retaining wall. There's actually two retaining walls in that location. One is sort of holding up the slope to the street, and the one, the second one is holding up the pathway going down to the park. And both are made of wood, and there are, there's visual evidence of deterioration. Currently, we have accomplished a source report and also a land survey. We are hoping to gather information in the next few months in order to scope out the project.
Thank you, Steve, very much.
Just as a reminder to my fellow commissioners, first of all, thank you to staff for that presentation. We're now sort of moving through this process in hopefully a cleaner and clearer way, wherein we will have public comment. We'll open a public hearing, public comment will be presented if staff can answer some questions. At that time, we'll let them, allow that, and then we'll close the, the public hearing, and we'll bring it, we'll bring it back to the commission to both make, to make questions and give comments, and have discussion and deliberation. And I'll just remind everyone, this is an informational item, so there's no votes. And with that, I will open the public hearing and ask if there is any public comment either in the room or on Zoom. And our friendly reminder will be back up.
If you're on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand.
Okay, and no one in the room? Excellent. With that, I will close the public hearing. I don't believe staff will have any response to that public hearing, and we can go on to Commissioner questions and discussion. Who would like to kick us off?
I've got a couple of questions.
Excellent. Commissioner Trap, take it away.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and great to have the photos to go with the script here. So just a couple of questions. On the Casanova Parks where you're working on the bathrooms, things like that, is there, are they open for use while you're in construction? If they are not, is there alternatives for people at the park to use something?
So what you don't see in the picture are these temporary porta potties that we have rented on site. One is accessible and the other one is a regular sized one.
Other one, the MLK location. So you said that you're kind of doing an assessment. Is, is that at some point going to be open for input from the community as to what they, how they're going to use, use that? Are you using data to kind of understand what would be some actual uses for that in the future? My question makes sense.
The answer is yes to some of those. I actually defer to Joanne to.
Yeah, there's just different aspects that, you know, we would want the community to weigh in on. There are certain aspects that are just going to be required to improve. So it's determining what those things are and how much money we have to do those. So it will come before you if there are choices available, yeah.
At the King Pool, you said there was leaky pumps. Is that, again, in use or hazardous? Or because of the leaky pumps, we're going to have to close that down or anything, or?
But they're basically old equipment that we currently maintain. They, when they leak, we basically perform a fix, almost like a patch. And so we are working on a plan to replace those pumps.
So we're trying to keep it open as much as possible while we're, okay, awesome. And then my last question was the retaining wall and Laurelwood. Is that hazardous at all, or is it, I mean, have we assessed that?
Currently not hazardous. They are basically visual deterioration, and so it's something that we're keeping an eye on. And if they, if it were hazardous, we would know by now.
Okay, so thank you. Those were my questions.
Excellent. The question or comments? Yes, please, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's very nicely done. The King Center has, I see, three projects on here. One, the small kitchen is just about done. My sense is that the rehabilitation, the renovation project could be fairly expensive. Is, is that kind of your gut feeling? There is, there is rhyme and reason in my question.
Yes. Yes, expensive is a relative term, but yes, it will be costly, yes. So compared to other projects in the city, it's, it will be reasonable.
The reason I ask that way is that when I see three projects for one location, I start thinking that, wow, usually to minimize the cost in a project, one would want to scope everything at the start as opposed to going piecemeal. I'm not saying that this is going piecemeal, but again, I do see three separate projects for the same location. Will there be one overall project? Well, first, do you also feel that having one overall project plan as opposed to multiple piecemeal projects can save money?
Absolutely, yes. We usually start with a master plan, and we break down the projects based on priority. And so these projects that you see, you see here were actually prioritized many years ago and that we're just coming to completion with. And so as we move forward, we're always evaluating, always reassessing based on the current needs. So for example, after the pandemic, all the uses sort of changed a little bit. And so similar to, it's a library where people are using or looking at books less, looking at media more. In a similar way, I think this recreation center is used, being used differently. And so we're always assessing every, you know, five to 10 years to 25 years. And so when the projects come along, we always address the priorities first and then reevaluate further on. So it might seem like we're piecemealing everything, but it was all part of a master plan at some point.
So there is a master plan now, and these fit into that?
Correct, from about 10 years ago, yes.
Okay. Stop there, thank you.
Do any of my other fellow commissioners have a question or comment? No? Yes, please, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you for the presentation. So to start out with, for the Dr. Mark and Vivian Kang tree community center, you mentioned that you were still figuring out the scope for improvement. I was wondering if there is any idea or any direction that you're leaning towards.
I guess I can share, we are leaning toward a resilient center. And it's something that, resilient center is something that is used during emergency. For example, there are sleeping quarters, there are showering facilities, kitchens, backup power, a place of refuge, basically. So that is sort of a long-term goal. Not as long as we hope, but it is, it is a goal that we hope to achieve.
Thank you. And then for the pool improvements, I was wondering if you guys were going with a certain, a specific standard or test for the improvements, or is it just a general review?
Oh, it's a general assessment, but there are already a lot of like types of equipment that are, that meet code, that meet compliance. Right now, a lot of our equipment doesn't meet, doesn't, are not coded.
Grandfathered to the current code.
Trying to explain, but they're old.
So yeah, yeah, so they've been grandfathered in, yeah. And then I just have one final question is for the small kitchen. Do you guys have any plans on how the kitchen will be maintained? Is there like community workers that will help maintain the kitchen? Or any like specific rules that will be set for the people who use the kitchen?
Right, actually, the, there are already general rules set for the kitchen, you know. Mainly the kitchen's used for storage and maybe warming up things here or there, maybe some catering. The existing kitchen actually has, all the cabinets are locked to some, I guess, every group has a certain or does a number of cabinets for use. In the past, I believe it was used quite well, but quite heavily. And so eventually, everything kind of broke down, and so we're replacing kind. And so I believe our existing system works.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Jolink, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, I don't, thank you for your presentation, by the way. I had a question about the Laurelwood Park retaining wall. So um, in terms of like replacing the wall with like new material, how do you plan on replacing it without, you know, the whole chunk of earth is falling down, sliding?
Right. We haven't gotten there yet, but there are ways of shoring, you know, the existing mountains. It's almost as if we're digging a trench that's maybe 10 feet deep, but only one foot wide. There are opportunities to, and ways of shoring the earth to keep it from collapsing into the hole or down the hill. Thank you.
Great, um, any further questions?
No.
Okay. Can you explain, you mentioned at the Bearsford entry point and the Lake Shore Recreation Center, those are both ADA projects that it sounds like are voluntary. Can you explain kind of how that works?
Right. So volunteering meaning that we aren't required, typically, we are required to make ADA improvements as part of a larger project, for example. So if we were to renovate maybe the kit, one of the kitchens inside, I'm not sure if there are any kitchens, renovate one of the spaces inside the facility, we would be required to prove or make ADA improvements either throughout the building or a portion of building.
So there's some kind of like tipping point of when you make a certain level of improvements, then that triggers ADA and you have to make, make it accessible?
Correct.
Okay, but until that point, because these are older assets, they don't have to.
Correct. And the reason why we're doing this is basically, it is a heavily used center, and we're basically serving the public. That's really the main reason we're doing it.
It ought to be ADA compliant.
Well, and it doesn't make sense to make ADA compliant improvements inside if you can't get to it from the outside, so.
Of course, of course, I appreciate the logic.
Yes.
I also just, I would like to echo what some of my fellow commissioners have said around the King Center, and also just kind of lift it up as, you know, we haven't quite figured out how to sort of enumerate equity in some of these projects, but that is a heavily used space by, you know, children and families and individual adults who don't have a lot of alternative choices. And so it's, it's a, it is an important public good, I think, the King Center. In the same way, I think our libraries and other sort of known low-cost amenities are in our community. And so prioritizing the, the sort of thoughtful rehabilitation of that site. And also, I would just like to say, I was personally shocked that there wasn't a fire alarm. I don't understand how that can be. Maybe you can explain to me how we didn't need to have a fire alarm at that site?
We, it's not, we never needed it.
Okay.
Have other fire suppression systems. So there, there is a fire sprinkler system. The fire alarm system that you saw there is, is basically monitors the system, almost like a, it would basically monitor these sensors that are already there. And the, the, yeah, and the water usage, for example, if something were to trip, it would actually notify somebody else.
Okay.
Before, it was just localized.
So this is an advancement of a system that's already in place, not just a new system entirely?
That's correct.
Okay.
And you'll see the panel right when you walk in the front door, so that when emergency services come to respond to something, they can know exactly what's going on through the panel.
Great.
And the communication.
Great. I just, I personally felt very worried starting to talk about this.
Yes, I, I think I used the, a different terminology when I explained it, so sorry to read you properly.
No, no, it's okay, that's why we have these questions. I'll just say, you know, again, I really want to say thank you to staff. I know oftentimes you're doing a lot with a little. And, you know, parks are, and our recreation centers are, I believe, the crown jewel of our city. So really thank you for, for all that you do and making us as well resources as we can be. And with that, I will say this is just an informational item and no action is necessary, so thank you.
Chairfield, may I add a comment?
Yes, indeed. Vice Chair, I, I understand you took a field trip.
I took a field trip.
Maybe you'd like to tell us about it.
That's what I would like to do, my comment.
Excellent.
So on, on Monday, Stephen Marie met me at Washington Park. And you may recall from the last meeting, I was quite curious about the cost of resurfacing a basketball court. And I see resurfacing costs upwards of $400,000 for a court. And being new to municipal finance, this was shocking to me. But again, I am new to municipal finance and municipal projects. And so they were kind enough to spend a half hour in the middle of their workday to walk me around the Washington Park Basketball Court. I was able to ask very detailed questions about what were the problems, what were especially the unexpected surprises? So things like water percolation, discovery of an asbestos-laced layer, the wonderful things that we did mid-century in legacy resurfacing projects, ADA compliance, and how that adds to the complexity of the planning and the execution. So it's a real eye-opener. And I am very grateful to you for taking your time and indulging my numerous questions. Regrettably, they have piqued my interest even more, so there's probably even more questions coming. And I am really looking forward to playing some basketball on that court. And I'm so glad that it's going to be open ahead of schedule. Last, last meeting schedule said summer 2024, and it will be open in less than two weeks, I think. That's fantastic.
Yes. Excellent. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions on this item?
I just wanted to follow up to what you said to the King's facility that you were assessing whether or not to potentially use that as a resilient center for emergencies. But did I, did I get that correct? What led up to that being an option? Is it that we don't have anything like that currently in our environment, in our area? Or is we're seeing increased need, families who need emergency services?
So I would say, due to many of the different things that we've responded to in recent years, whether there be fires, so air quality, lack of air quality, cooling centers, warming centers. I think traditionally, San Mateo has leaned heavily on the library system to facilitate that. And so we're trying to ensure that our other facilities, our recreational facilities, are upgraded in a way that can manage kind of bigger disasters and people long-term. So shower facilities are one of those key factors, and we have a pool adjacent with a shower facility. So trying to take that into consideration was one of the key factors as to why we chose the King Center and its location, the main library, which usually i- is on the western side of town. And so the central location for the King Center kind of made a lot, a lot of sense, citywide, as being that facility that could serve the public well. So that's why it was chosen.
And that's one function of, that would be the.
Correct, correct. It's just to get that facility up to speed to be able to provide those services there. In, in addition. In in addition to all the other things that we want to do, recreation wise. Yeah.
I wonder if it would be possible, Steve, you mentioned that there's now a ten year old master plan for the King Center. Would it be possible at a future meeting to have a staff presentation on that master plan? If you, I would say, if you think it's still relevant.
Can I speak to that really quickly, not to interrupt?
Just because there are so many questions about it, so I want like, I think you think it would be useful for us to hear about it. I would love to hear.
Yes, yes. So um I don't think that I've even reviewed that yet. So uh but I do want to mention, you know, um that in my initial meetings um regarding the CIP last year, my first experience um seeing the CIP, there were different projects um designated at King that we did put on hold because we were doing the overall um analysis. So like the large kitchen is a project that has been put on hold because it is so costly um to determine, you know, is there a better configuration of that space or perhaps? And we also installed um a family changing room off of um the pool. Um so we did that renovation that that happened this year. Um so there have been some improvements that I don't think would affect the overall of the assessment, but um we'll look at that and bring it back in conjunction with the new um analysis to see if there's um, you know, some kind of pairing up or something that we might have might have missed.
Great. Excellent. With that, I will close the item. Um and we will go to item number four. Twenty twenty four summer recreation camps, programs and events preview, also an informational item. I will call for a staff presentation. So we have some of, I was wondering who all these fun giggles are.
Um I'll stand, thank you.
There is no back of the room here.
I know. It's like, it's a.
So um thank you so much for having us, Commissioners. My name is Tracy Brummett, and um I'm currently the Acting Community Services Section Manager.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I know, I haven't actually seen it written down. So thank you, Ju, for putting that on there. Um and with me, I have Heather Murphy, who is our Community Services Supervisor for Use Development, as well as Christine Peralta, who is our Outreach Special Events Community Services Supervisor. And we are here today to talk all things summer. Summer is our, it is parks and recreation. Like, I want to say like to the max, like, no, it was the nineties, but um to the extreme. So we have a uh, we're the fun people. So we have a um fun presentation for you. I mean, you might not think it's fun, but I think it's fun. Um to just kind of give you a preview of what we have going on. I mean, we literally work on the season of summer all year long, so it's like the PC resistance of. Oh, sorry, those.
Hi. Like what Tracy said, my name is Christine. Very excited to be here tonight. So we're going to start off this presentation with our summer activity guide, which is now out online at www.cityofSanMateo.org/activityguide. You can also browse SanMateorec.org and check out all the wonderful programs we have offered this summer. Registration, oh, sorry, that's okay, I'm watching. Totally fine. Registration for San Mateo residents is on Tuesday, May fourteenth at nine AM. You can register online or come into one of our centers. And registration for non-residents are on Thursday, May sixteenth at nine AM, so just two days later. And with that, we have so many programs for all of ages. We have two hundred and fifty classes. We have tennis, rebound basketball, ceramics, chess, uh jamero, zumbidi preschool, karate, taekwondo, acrylic and oil painting, Californian mahjong, wonder of watercolor, tech tutoring, the list goes on. Please check out the activity guide. There's a lot of fun stuff in there. Wonderful classes karate up here, and we have our uh senior program, our lunch.
All right. So getting into the fun stuff, summer camp in Aquatics twenty twenty four. Uh so we have a little small army of people who program all of our summer camps, whether they're in-house camps led by our, you know, hired Parks and Recreation staff, or we also have contracted uh camps, more specialty camps, whether it be tennis or an art camp or drama or things of that nature. So we have um currently have two hundred and six ish one week camps. Most of them are one week long. We do have one camp that runs about three weeks, and that's our Bay Area ETC. It's a theater program for kids, um as well as we have four hundred and twenty one individual swim lessons happening in both King and Jointville pools. So some of the types of camps are offered, the ones that are in green are our internal camps. So these are led by um some of these amazing people standing right next to me. Um so Camp Mateo is our typical summer day camp where we are at Community Center and Park as well as Beresford Park. We have about sixty kids in each from six to eight, age six to age eleven. Um they go swimming once a week at one of our pools. They do two field trips a week. Uh it is, it's just an amazing, if you go to the parks, you'll see, especially at Beresford, are you guys putting tents at?
No, no.
Oh, because they have the indoor facility. So we put like the, we were like twenty by twenty tents up at the park. If you're, everybody also likes, we like to call it cabanas for our picnic people, because on the weekends they're still there. Um so it's kind of a nice um amenity during the summer to have that shade. So if you're walking through any of those parks in the summer, you will see them for sure. Pre-camp is for our little guys over at Lake Shore. Um it's our preschool camp program. Um Stream Summer Days is for our middle school kids. Uh so that one is a full day program. Um and then we have stack, which is which is summertime, summertime at King. We love a good acronym. Um and that one's just in the afternoon. And then we have a different training program, which is kind of where we want to get, we have a lot of our campers that grow up in our program, and then they come to volunteer in our program for a summer, a summer or two, because we want those people to then turn around in the future and apply for jobs to run the camps. Uh then all of the ones on the right hand side are all of the camps that we are all independent contractors that we contract with. So we have athletic camps, extreme sports camps, cheerleading, educational and learning technology, dance, music, theater, art, cooking. I mean, it's a, there's, it kind of runs the gamut of, there's a very wide variety. And all of these are kind of, obviously, the athletic programs happen in our parks. They're outside skate parks at Beresford. Um as well as we have a lot of our specialty camps will be, you know, inside Beresford Center, inside King Center. King Center kind of changes its focus a little bit during the summer months. We move some of our other programming to other centers, so they can be very summer camp focused. Um, yeah. Um so as I was speaking to the teen volunteer opportunities, leaders in training, amazing program uh to get those kids. Because basically, if you teach them as their volunteers, and then they grow up and they know they're, I mean, they're coming in already knowing so much of how our camp structure and everything works. Then we also have our Green Teens Program, which is actually a paid position in the Parks and Recreation Department. Um so this is for, it's like fourteen.
Fifteen to seventeen.
Fifteen to seventeen, thank you. Um and they work alongside our Parks Division and kind of find some fun projects, some different types of projects. So they're not just always doing landscaping, or they're not always um cleaning a playground they've done. Um and they work with them hand in hand, to be able to kind of learn how to take care of their parks and everything that goes into it. And then they get paid, so bonus. Yep. And then aquatics. I spoke earlier that there was like four hundred and twenty one um lessons. So we have about thirteen levels, starting at six months. That's our Aqua Talk up to, you know, the group lessons. Parenting me, the group lessons is supposed to be private lessons, but then I also love that there are specialized teen and adult entry level lessons. Make everybody water safe is very important. And then we also have um our recreation swimming that happens at both pools as well. So typically, there'll be swim lessons in the morning, recreation swim in the afternoon. Um and then kind of goes back to lessons around four, four o'clockish, four thirty evening hours. Um so my kids take swim lessons, King Center, you'll see me there. We'll be literally be like living there, I think. So um.
And then back to Christine.
All right. So we have lots of special events this summer coming up. We have our Central Park Music Series, which will be running June twentieth through August eighth, every Thursday. And then, of course, since Fourth of July falls on a Thursday, we're going to have a special concert with kind of some activities for the kids uh from eleven to two is when all activities will be taking place. And then twelve to two o'clock will be when the concert is happening. And on the very bottom, we have our Mobile Recreation Program. So we're going to be going out to a variety of parks. Thank you. I was like, oh boy. Um so on Saturday, June first, we're going to be at Parkside Aquatic. Uh the theme is carnival, so come on down and check it out. On uh obviously for July fourth, Central, the in Central Park Mobile Rec will be there. We'll have some games and spectivities that just the Mobile Rec staff will be running, um some family games with all of the families. On Saturday, July twenty seventh, we'll be at Casanova. The theme for that event is Shrek. Shrek is very big right now. That's what my staff says, so I believe them. They're in the know with everything. And then the last one is Saturday, August seventeenth, we'll be at Harborview Harborview Park, excuse me, and the theme will be wellness, going back into school. So we'll be kind of all over the place with Mobile Rec, uh just one of our more of outreach programs that our department has. Okay, so over our eight week summer about, we hire a small army of people to help us run all of our amazing camps. So in aquatics, we um employ between thirty five and forty lifeguards and swim instructors. Um this summer, we are, we have about thirteen returning staff. So we're looking to hire about twenty five to thirty new lifeguards and swim instructors. Um our summer camp programs, our in-house camps, we employ sixty to seventy day camp staff for, to run our summer. Uh we have forty two returning staff, which is thrilling to me. We are looking to hire about twenty to twenty five new staff uh to work with us this summer. So some of the jobs that we're hiring for are student assistants for Green Teens, which we talked about, recreation specialists. We have three different positions, one, two, and three. Um they vary on their skill and knowledge level. Um we have field attendants working um with our athletic department, getting those fields ready for sports. We have gym attendants, scorekeepers, and facility specialists that work at our front desks for our facilities. So if you know anyone, share with everyone we are hiring. We'd love to um meet them and interview them and give them the opportunity to come in, work in the best place you could be all summer. And so anybody that's interested, they can go to the website here, www.cityofSanMateo.org backslash summer jobs. And then with that, um it is in July, we celebrate National Parks and Recreation Month, and this uh year it is where you belong. So we'll be celebrating that all of July. That's it. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Um I I guess now we will open it up for public comment. Um, Giovanni, do we have any slips for in the room or any hands raised for public comment on this item?
We don't have anybody in person. If you're on Zoom, if you could please raise your hand, if you would like to speak on this item.
Excellent. Then I will close the public hearing. Um and I will bring it back to the commission. Do my fellow commissioners have anything they would like to say about any of what we just saw? Oh, please, use Commissioner Lee.
I.
Excellent.
Um start off, you guys mentioned the registration. So I was wondering if when we're to miss the registration deadline, would they still be able to?
Yeah, so that um so registration for the summer classes, that's just the first thing it starts. You can register for things up until they're full or even after it started.
And then um I saw there were many fun programs and also opportunities for teens and so and volunteering and paid work. So I was wondering, um your ideas and promotions, like where you guys would be promoting these um opportunities?
Yeah, we have been attending job fairs at all of the high schools um in San Mateo, as well as we've gone out to Millbrae Burlingame. We um have also gone to uh CSM, Skyline, Quinata. So we've kind of been everywhere um at all their job fairs, looking to meet people to see if they want to come and work with us. Um and on top of that, we also have been putting out, we put out our little job announcement that you saw on our presentation, that was up um on social media. And so to promote and and hope to meet people.
I was going to suggest like Instagram or just like visiting, yeah, everything, yes.
Yeah, I think it's time probably to repost.
Yes, yeah.
Because then you can share it.
We posted a little bit of that, yeah.
And then all of your high school friends will come up.
Many opportunities.
Yes, there's, yes. And I think like when you saw it, like when I saw it on the list, I was like, oh my gosh. Man, I know we hire a lot of people, but when I literally like something, yeah, it's a lot.
And then um for the programs, I was wondering if more majority of them are free, like is there any cost?
Oh, so they are, there are costs associated. Uh so when you look kind of at the activity guide, there is the fee depending on camps could be, you know, in the a couple hundred dollars, depending on which camp. Uh but then we'll also have activities for seniors um or have different, it just, it depends on the activity, but for the typically, there is a a cost.
And then lastly, um I'm heard you guys mentioned about holding these activities at like libraries or the parks. And I was wondering, maybe this year, would you guys be considering expanding to other facilities or?
Um so currently, we're at about fourteen or so facilities throughout the city. Um with our own facilities, Shoreview Center, Lake Shore, King Center, Senior Center, and Beresford. Um and then with all the different parks and such we're at, but I think, you know, where you, I would always be happy to bring something to the library. We have a very nice, large building.
Thank you.
Of course.
Um, Commissioner Trap, you said you had many things you'd like to say.
Please, please.
First of all, thank you for the presentation, and I can't imagine anyone not wanting to work with you guys. You seem like such a fun. Um so, yeah, I wrote down quite a few things here. I think we had early on, we had talked about a new app, because your very first slide, it reminded me that we had a slight, did we?
We are still in the uh building process for that. Um so we had brought it here, and then we also brought it to our senior commission and got some feedback from them. Um so with the ramp up for summer, we're still, we're still working on it. It's a slow process, a little bit slower than I think we anticipated, but we want to do it right.
Okay, awesome. Um data wise, are we gonna have data as to number of employees, participation or dashboard?
Like you said.
Yeah, so we'll be coming back and all the, yes, I don't know, we don't know that yet, uh at the end of the summer to kind of give the data, the numbers, and how many people we serve, how many kids were in camp, how many, you know, kids came water safe, revenue, expect all that kind of stuff. Yeah.
So then that would kind of be where any revenue generation that we had from.
Yeah, yeah.
Um you had mentioned um about uh the leaders uh that you're trying to uh grow naturally through that, but is there any also like mentoring that would be going on, but not so much with like the parks, but maybe just with the city? So an opportunity for, since they are in summer, to have some mentoring with, you know, how to be a part of the city.
Right. I think um not formally, but I think that happens naturally.
I, we actually are, we have an internship program that um is offered in different departments, and so I can get further details about that and bring that to the commission.
I mean, since you're tapping into this group, there may be an opportunity to offer.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah.
Um uh I know that you have a list of things to hire, but if you don't get enough people, have you, where where it's not active and they're not picking weeds? Is there any opportunity to bring in the seniors to kind of come in and have seniors come in and do some of the just scorekeeping or something like that?
We will take anybody. Love to have a conversation with anybody who'd be interested.
So is it marketing to maybe seniors?
Yeah, yeah. We will make sure we have that over at the senior center.
I think my last question was, oh, oh, um, oh, advertising. Uh you, I know you said you did the the socials and all that stuff, but anything formal like Through Glass Door, LinkedIn, to get the parents to see it, to then refer it down to their kid?
We do post on Cal Ops, yeah.
But that's a good idea to do on LinkedIn otherwise. Good idea. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Um, any questions or comments?
I have comments.
Excellent.
So I want to thank you so much for the presentation.
So I want to thank you so much for that presentation. It was really exciting. I think you guys did a really great job with the summer program. So two questions. So the jobs that you're advertising, I'm, I'm just curious, are you, do you have any Spanish version of it? Are you in Spanish? Because is there a need for it? I'm just curious.
Yeah. So that job postcard that you guys saw, that's, we also have one in Spanish as well. So if anyone needs help, you can always send us about in English and Spanish.
And then my second question is about the aquatics at the pool. What are the pool hours? Is it the regular hours or do you have longer hours in the summer?
So, um, well, rec swim is like one to four, one to five, depending on the pool. But I think for the, like in the morning, lessons might start at like as early as like nine, nine. And then they typically conclude around eight, I want to say, PM, thank you. For, yeah, so they're, I mean, they're open a majority of the day.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, Youth Commissioner Jolinkor, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. I had a question regarding like fees and that kind of thing for the summer programs. Is there, so let's say, um, parents are trying to send their kids to like summer programs. But they can't afford it. Is there like some kind of financial aid offered?
Yeah. So we have, for Sametown residents, we have our recreation fee assistance program where youth can earn up to sixty percent off of the price. So there's, um, there's an application they fill out. There's certain things, certain, you know, criteria that they have to meet. And then, yeah, we have, we have a lot of people on, in our recreation fee assistance program.
And then one more question. So on one of, one of the job slides with have, have like all the jobs and that kind of thing. It had, it said like recreation specialist, like three times that had like the different numbers. Could you explain like the difference between the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe can we bring that slide back up?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
So our recreation specialist one position is kind of your entry level position into our summer camp program. So that's when they're just starting out. They might not have a lot of experience. They are also typically under the age of sixteen, thank you, yeah, sixteen or seventeen years old. So they may not have graduated from high school. So they're still in high school currently. And then our rec two, typically they've had a little bit of experience, but don't, we don't require it, but they are, have graduated from high school or are eighteen. And then our rec three position is our camp leadership position. And so they have a lot of responsibility. They are kind of supporting their, their other coworkers. And typically have had several years of experience working in our summer camp programs.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one more. Um, let's say I got a summer job at like Life Bar at the pool. Let's say the following summer, could I return back at the job or would I have to re-interview?
No, no, you wouldn't have to re-interview. You could, if, if you worked for the summer and it went well, then you would.
We would ask you if you'd like to come back. Yeah. So like when Heather mentioned that she has our, kind of our internal camps, forty two returning staff. So we have a lot of staff who have, you know, they've, they have also grown up in our program and they go off to be teachers during school year. They're teachers and like, well, summer, they're going to come work in summer camp, right? We're not, we don't rehire them and re-interview them every year unless they were trying to go, unless they were wanted to move to a different position. Right? To be promoted to like a space in a rec three. Then we're all going to have a conversation, but you don't need to go through the whole process. Yeah, it's a lot.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Excellent. Great clarifying questions. Um, Vice Chair Richard, do you have anything you'd like to say about all this?
Just one quick thing. Usually the enthusiasm and dedication of leadership shows down in the final product. And so I am very excited to see some great programs this summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say thank you. I appreciate all the clarifying questions. I did just want to ask, where did we land on the, and I apologize for not having looked at the catalog. Where did we land on the delta between residents and non-residents in terms of price?
So the prices the same?
Okay. It's just that you get the advantage of.
Two days prior.
Okay, okay. Great. That was the only question I had and I'll just say thank you. I appreciated your enthusiasm and your presence during the other portions of the meeting. And, and I'll look forward to all the amazing programs of the summer. And I'll say to everyone in the room, I encourage you to, especially to the summer concert series. They are well attended and well enjoyed. And oftentimes there is a little something you can buy that supports the Parks Foundation at those events. Which is a nice thing to do. And really thank you for all your work and for bringing Sametown together in recreation and joy.
Thank you.
And with that, I will ask, are there any reports and announcements?
I just have a few things through the chair. I am sorry that our outgoing commissioner had left, but there is a bike rodeo happening this Friday, this.
Incredible.
On May the fourth, and out at Bayside Academy and from ten to noon. And so I have flyer here if anybody's interested. We also have our PAL Star Vista Mental Health Matters 5K Run and Walk for, and Wellness Fair. And that is happening on May eighteenth out at Ryder Park from nine to one. And I have information about that if anyone's interested. And we're delighted to, to announce that our Fallen Heroes Memorial Ribbon Cutting will be on May twenty third at eleven AM. So please mark your calendars. We would love to see all of you there. Don't need to reiterate the ramping up for summer hiring. I think that was covered.
Sorry, is it May twenty third?
May twenty third, eleven AM.
Thank you.
Central Park.
Yep.
And the last thing I want to mention is summer is about to start. So we will be having meetings in the summer. So if you are going to be out of town, if you could let us know as soon as possible for scheduling purposes. We normally cancel our July meeting. So just for your reference, but we'll be sending out reminders. You know, for next month's meeting, which is, I think, June. We'll check your calendar, but it's first week of June, obviously.
I do, sorry, June fifteenth. I did have a question. Where are we on the timeline for our fifth commission?
So I think today was the final day or the deadline was today or yesterday. So I think, I believe interviews will be at the end of the month. So I'm not sure it will be executed by June, but likely by the August meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, great.
Do any of my commissioners have an announcement or thing that they feel the public should know? Excellent. Seeing none.